Yeah, I don't know. It didn't know.
I'd like to call the Monday, June 18 regular board meeting to order, please. Welcome to all of you who are with us for a reason or another, I'm sure. We just don't have anybody who wants to just come and spend time with us. And welcome to the delayed broadcast audience as well. Allow me to introduce the board members at the table with me. From my right, we have Shawn Heitman, Karina Hernandez, and Ross Harris. From the left, we have Mike Miller, Ben Fletcher, and Janelle Carter. At the center table with me, to my right is Paulette Newbold, our Board Secretary, and to my left is Dr. Theron Schutte, the School District Superintendent, and I'm Bea Niblock. We don't have a sheet on the table, but we'll get one for anyone who would like to sign up to speak to an issue on the agenda or during public comment section. Here's a pencil there. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
You will be given five minutes to speak during public comment section time. Board is not able to respond to your comments due to board policy, but we thank you for your comments anyway. Please read with me the mission of the Marshalltown High School District on one screen or another.
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we've got two amendments to the agenda. 2.06, monthly financial report, the PDF was uploaded on Sunday. And then 502, Heartland Business Systems proposal, the attachments for that were uploaded today. Josh will be speaking to that.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Harris Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections by anyone for the June 4 minutes? Any items of note and personnel, Mr. Spargattis?
No.
Looking at inter-agency agreements, we have agreements and contracts from Floroaks, a number of agreements and contracts for food service, and an art proposal for the Roundhouse. Are there any questions? Looking at open enrollments, we're seeking approval for two out and one in, and please note there is a denial of two outs. Any items of note in bills, Paulette?
Yeah.
In the monthly financial report? Please note that we are receiving a donation of $1,000 for the Marshalltown High School Robotics from the Ann Kaiser Charitable Trust. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Carter Fletcher, all in flavor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chocolate.
I thought you were asking flavor.
Flavor, strawberry. Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. And I assume after all that work to get the sheet, there's no one.
There's no one on there.
Okay. Moving into the education portion of our meeting, Stacy, would you please come forward?
Good afternoon.
Aye.
I'm glad to be here today to give you our annual health report. All right, I'm going to get started. Do I move that?
If you just tell Josh, signal.
Wonderful. All right. I'm going to start by talking to you a little bit about who serves in our health offices here in the district. We have nine registered nurses, all of them are bachelor-prepared, and we have three health aides, and they serve in our larger buildings where we have our increased enrollments at Lenahan, Miller, and the high school. We're going to go ahead and move to the next slide. The previous slide showed each of our nine buildings and who serves in each building, and we do have a change for next year. At Franklin, we have Carol Barlow, who is resigning, and Brittany Applegate is transferring from Miller to Franklin, and then we have hired Christina Malcolm, who will be our new Miller nurse. So, we're very grateful that Carol Barlow had served our district. She was quite an asset to our health services, and we will miss her, but Christina Malcolm is going to be a great addition to our team, and we're looking forward to her joining us. Just quickly here, I'm just going to highlight, oh, you can go ahead and go past that one. All right, there we go. Nursing services, lots of different things that nurses do. I think oftentimes, we think about nurses putting on Band-Aids and giving Tylenol for headaches. We certainly do do that, but we also provide several of these services here as well. I'm not going to go through all of them. It's pretty clear that our main role is in our health offices, providing those services to our students, but we also provide several other services within our buildings as well and in our district. We're the first responders to critical incidents on our school property for students, for staff, for visitors. Of course, an integral part of our role is the screening and referral for health conditions, the vision hearing and dental, that's a very integral part of our health offices. We collaborate with outside services to do that. For our vision, we have the Kid Site Program through the University of Iowa that we work with, and our Lions Club, they come in and do the screenings and assist us with that. Hearing is through our AEA services, and dental is through MICA with our I Smile programs. And so, we're very fortunate to work with those outside agencies who make sure that those screenings are all complete, and we do have 100% on those audits as well. Obviously, we provide specialized care for students with chronic health conditions so they can attend school. We collaborate with teachers, families, health providers, and community resources for the health and safety of our students. Obviously, we participate in IEP and 504 teams to make sure that our students' health needs are met, and we coordinate the Medicaid billing in each of our buildings as well. I'll go ahead and go to that next slide. And so, I asked each of our nurses, I know we do a lot of things outside of our health offices as well, I asked them if they could each tell me, what do you do in your school as far as education and training for your students and for our staff? And then also, what kind of committees and teams do you serve on in your building as well as in the community? And I got this great list. Certainly, all the nurses don't do each one of these things, and every building is a little different as far as what role that they want their nurses to support, you know, to be involved in that building. The one thing that's across the board in the classrooms, in all of our elementaries, the nurses do provide the growth and development training for our fourth graders, for the boys and girls. It's the dreaded talk that kind of introduces growth and development changes in their bodies. And so, the nurses do provide that across the board in all of our elementaries. And then also, you know, one other thing, the Health Fair, I coordinate that at the high school. That is a very fun event. It's health promotion, ranging from physical health to mental health. We have various vendors and local agencies that come in, and they do very interactive things with our students. And I always feel that, this year, we had this turnout of over 500 students that came through. Great promotion of health and wellness, and I really feel that kids walk out of there feeling kind of empowered, that, you know, they want to take care of their bodies. And then the Pregnancy Prevention Program is at the high school as well, and I work with CAPS, with their Adolescent Sexual Health teacher through there, and we present Pregnancy Prevention in the fall, in the spring, during a PE class for all ninth through 12th graders. And that's a very needed course. Of course, families can opt out of that. I send a note home to all families, and they can opt out if they want to, but that's also... And then as far as the staff training, EPIPENS, medication administration, we always do an update on our allergy awareness, AED training, and CPR, we facilitate that in our buildings. And then you can see through those committees and teams that various buildings have their nurses serve on wellness committees, safety teams, the Tier Two teams, counseling team, and out in the community, the Adolescent Sexual Health Coalition, and the Marshall County Care Team. I think it's so very important, and I'm so very proud of the nurses working outside of the district as well and making sure that we are connected to those outside resources so we can make sure that our students and their families have all those connections that they need to, to those outside resources, to make sure they have everything they need to be connected and get the support for their students to be healthy and safe in school. And we're going to go ahead and jump into some district data overview. So, as of June 1, our enrollment, according to Stacy Moner, was 5,201, and according to Infinite Campus, it showed that we had 2,447 students that enrolled last fall that indicated they had some form of a health condition. So that, I mean, 47%, that's almost half of our students. And yes, that simply could be that they have a visual defect, that they need to wear glasses, they could be nearsighted or farsighted. And then, of course, it ranges to our more complex problems, you know, they could have a cardiac condition, asthma. These numbers are pretty much steady. This has not changed a lot in the last six years that I've been in the district, that's not changing much. These are pretty consistent as far as what we've seen in the past. As far as health conditions, we follow, the ISNO, also the School Nurse Organization, it's a professional organization that has kind of hit on these biggies as far as school health conditions. These are the ones they track closely, and so we also do that as well. We submit this for national, their tracking that they do for various, for the schools. And asthma, anaphylaxis, what anaphylaxis is, you know, an acute allergic reaction to some type of an allergen, whether it be environmental or like a food allergy. Seizure disorders, type 1 diabetes, which is where they have the insulin dependency, and then the type 2 diabetes where that is controlled with either diet or oral medication. And those are the ones that we track pretty close. Those numbers as well have not changed much over the last six years that I've been here. We seem to be staying pretty steady with the same numbers in there. We've not seen a huge influx either way with that. And then with those students with the health conditions, we do have individual health plans and emergency health plans that we follow closely in our schools for those kids that have those needs. I have it broke down by schools, and you can see, obviously, our buildings where you have the increased enrollment, you see the larger numbers. So, an individual health plan is for any student that requires a school nurse service. Even a child at my school that has ADHD, I have a health plan for them, just so that I, you know, have that to follow. And it goes as far as, you know, students that have, you know, any life-threatening conditions such as a seizure disorder or diabetes, they need to have an EHP, which is the Emergency Health Plan. And that is, we do that in cooperation with their providers to make sure we have the protocol for if an emergency situation does arise. And the nurses are responsible in their buildings for their IHPs and their EHPs. And as you can see, it's broken down there by building. Right. Okay. And now, we're going to hit on our student health visits. And what we do track, the outcome of our health visits as well, which is very important for us to kind of see, where do those students go after we see them? Last year, we saw 77,610 students in our health offices throughout the district. That's a pretty significant number. That is up by about 20,000 from the last time I did a report, which we were in the 50,000 then. I don't honestly know why that is, other than, I mean, because we haven't seen any significant increases in our chronic health conditions. I don't know if that has anything to do with social determinants being more significant, where we see students in our offices for they need to take a nap, or they are hungry, or, I don't know that for sure. We do have a breakdown of why students come in our office. I don't have that listed on here, but we certainly can pull that up from Infinite Campuses as well, you know, if they're coming in for a headache, or tired, or fatigue, we can track all that as well. But our total health office visits were definitely up. And of course, our buildings that have the increased enrollments are the ones where we see the most visits at, too. And of those 77,000, 59,104, we were able to send back to class. So, they came in, we assessed them, and we found that they were okay to stay at school. We either treated them, gave them some Tylenol, or did something for them, and we were able to send them back to class. And we sent 2,324 of those students home. I don't have listed on here, but I do know that we had, in Infinite Campus, we recorded that we sent three out by ambulance from our schools when they had, they came to our health office, or we responded to them for whatever health need that it may have been. And then also, we have recorded that we had 47 that were taken right to their medical providers from the school. I'm sure that number's a lot higher, but we're not always able, we advise parents oftentimes to take them to the doctor. We don't always know if they do, you know, go to the doctor or not, if they're actually taken. And then...
That's a good question. So, of the kids that come to the nurse's office, 42.5% go back to class, 1.7% go home, and then the remaining percentage, which is near 55, are those just staying in the office?
Oh, that doesn't really look very good on that pie, does it?
I think that pie is...
I think that pie's not very accurate. No. No, that would definitely not be that. That pie needs to be redone.
But if you look at the right column, there is 16,000-ish that are missing.
Yeah, thank you.
So, is there another category?
No, there is not. Our categories are back to class, sent home, medical referral, or EMS. So, no. You're right. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I will update that pie, or basically, I may not even use that pie chart. I just went in and plugged in the numbers, and that's what it gave me. All right.
Do you have some kids that are habitual, that come?
Absolutely. Yeah, we do. And usually, that's established pretty early on, and so oftentimes, we have to work with the teachers as far as knowing when to allow a student to come down to see us, or when they may just be crying wolf, and they just want to come down to get out of class. So, yeah, we do monitor that closely. That does happen.
Do you have to engage the parents?
Just avoidance. Sometimes, we do have to contact parents. Usually, when we talk to a student, we let them know, we're going to have to talk to their parent, you know, we've seen you 20 times in the last, you know, month, and we let them know that we might be calling their parents. A lot of times, that kind of changes on their own. They decide, oh, maybe I won't come quite as often. Yeah. Thank you for noting that on my pie chart. All right. So, going to the immunization audit compliance. So, the state of Iowa, they really, they like to use 93% and above as where they would like to see your rates. So, this is broken down by school. As you can see, we have a very good compliance from all of our schools. This was given to me by Marshall County Public Health. I just wanted to highlight quickly, too, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard about the seventh and 12th grade requirement for the meningitis. That's something that we're working through again this year. We have to track that pretty closely through the summer to make sure that we are compliant with that, because as noted, there is no grace period for that. So, if you are entering seventh grade or 12th grade on the first day of school, you do not have the vaccine. There is no 60-day provisional period, which is usually what is granted to all students if they are deficient in a vaccine, no provisional period. They have to have it, or they can't come to school. So, we work closely with public health and our local providers to make sure that our students do have that vaccine, and we've had really good results. We've done a lot of things. Andrew has helped us with advertising, we've had stuff in the local paper, on the radio, we've sent out mailings to families, we've made personal phone calls. Last year, we did a couple of home visits because, you know, people have moved, we couldn't find them. So, we make it happen. We make it happen. And then, state requirements, just simply, I kind of talked about that all before, you know, we do have the dental screenings, the hearing screens, the vision screens that we collaborate with our outside resources to make sure that we are able to be compliant with those. The state does audit to make sure we have those screens done, and as well as the immunization audit. And we are always almost right at 100% with all of those, and that is because we do have those outside sources that can come in. If those students aren't unable to get them on their own, then we get them done in the school. So, we have 100% compliance with that. And finally, Medicaid claiming for school-based services. So, the nurses do coordinate the Medicaid billing for the students in their building. Last year, we billed on approximately 88 students. That number is down, as well as the income. I'm not quite sure why that is for sure. Kids in and out of the district, we have students that transfer out for various reasons. We bill for health services and for behavioral services, so sometimes, we have students that are, you know, out, that leave for placement in various facilities, and so we lose some that way. But that is another role that nurses play, as the facilitators for Medicaid billing. And in conclusion, as we know, a student's health is directly related to his or her ability to learn. Students who are medically fragile or who have any of the social determinants that put them at risk for poor emotional and physical health outcomes, many of them do attend our schools, and that requires a professional nurse as part of their team. We promote the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement and health of our students. Keeping our students safe, healthy, and ready to learn is a priority in our health offices. And just in conclusion also, I hear so many stories about relationships that our nurses have built with our families, with our students, with outside resources, with providers. We definitely are that middle person bridging, you know, a student that does have health concerns with their education. And I'm very proud of the nurses in our offices, building those relationships, and a lot of times, they're lifelong relationships that they build with these families in our community. Do you guys have any questions for me? I kind of rattled off.
Are your nurses mandatory reporters?
Absolutely, yes. They are mandatory reporters, and oftentimes, even though other staff, the teachers, as well, you know, they're all mandatory reporters, a lot of times, staff come to the nurse's office when they have a concern. They use us as a resource possibly to assess the situation also, and then we work together to do the reporting. Yes.
Have you seen any student health issues related to anxiety and social media, and have you had to change how you do your job a little bit because of social media?
Absolutely. And something that I was going to say as well, in our tracking, we're looking at more of our social and mental health issues that we're seeing definitely an uptake in our schools, and we're going to track that a little closer next year as far as that data. But definitely, at the high school and at our middle school levels, we have had issues with that. And we work closely with our counselors, our social workers, and at the high school, I work closely with our probation officer and our SRO, who deal a lot with those things. And yes, there is definitely an uptake of that, and we do see more anxiety and stressors and behaviors because of social media issues. I'm so glad I didn't grow up in a time when that was... I was just passing a note to somebody here, you know, it's out there for everyone to see, and it's pretty scary sometimes. It's hard on these kids.
Are there any best practices around the country or the state in regard to this that can help you and your nine nurses do their jobs better?
Well, obviously, best practice is for any students that we are able to, you know, get our hands on, whether it be in our health offices or in any of our educational settings that we are in. Obviously, promoting that, promoting our students being smart and using social media for educational purposes and for social purposes, not for the detriment of bullying or... And we actually have, and we were able to, four of us were able to go to continuing ed through the Iowa School Nurse Organization this year, and there was a component on social media and how that affects the mental health and physical health of our students. So, I think it's really important that we keep up to date on that as well. That's a good question. Thank you.
I want to thank Stacy for leadership and helping us keep our policies where they need to be relative to both the law and best practice, and she also has done an outstanding job helping navigate some issues that come up from time to time regarding our policies and practices. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And book time.
So, as we do every year, we've provided all of the handbooks to the board as an information only for this board meeting with the idea that at the July board meeting, we'll take formal action to approve. We've asked representatives from each of the levels, preschool through high school, to be here to speak to any changes. I think for the most part, there weren't significant changes, but we'll maybe just start with Emily and work our way across there. I believe everything that was changed is highlighted in the drafts, so as you're going through them.
Hello.
Hi.
We have just noted three changes in our handbook. On page one, we added in that we're having a three-year-old program, and that we will be having preschool five days a week. So, that would be a change for this coming year. On page two, we added the YMCA, YWCA as a community partner for preschool, so we wanted them noted in here as well. And then, the very last page, we wanted to address transportation a little more directly in here, so we added at the very end that not only do the families need to adhere to the overall transportation handbook, but preschool has a unique component that we can't just drop them off in front of their house. An adult must walk them out of the bus and be present when we drop them off. And so, we needed something we could maybe refer back to if we have repeat families not being there on time.
Questions for Emily?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, elementary.
I think there's five different areas that are highlighted under the elementary handbook. The first one is adding the professional days that we have for our 18, 19 school year. The Mondays are noted in there, and that there will not be any school in session during those days. The next one is under the harassment piece. That piece, we added the board policy linked to as well. Under nutrition services, board policy added to that as well.
Did that not change at the state level? That we cannot offer an alternate meal?
We'll have Lynn look that over and see if it needs to be adjusted, or is she here?
She was here.
Because that was one of the...
It was at least up for question.
Yeah. It was brought to the floor, anyway.
It's over identification.
Yes. Because it causes identification of students.
It does.
And we can make an adjustment on that.
I know that at the elementary levels, we always offer, it's a sandwich, we always offer that as an alternative anyway, so if a child does prefer to have that versus a hot meal, they can choose whether they have a negative balance or not.
But isn't that served as the main course, and they still get the rest of the meal?
Correct. Correct.
The difference with an alternative meal is that's all they get, is the cheese sandwich and a carton of milk. And it's very obvious that they're getting a different meal. At the elementary level, kids are totally shocked when that occurs.
Mm-hmm.
I remember tears when they would get that meal.
Yeah, and we'll take a look at that before it comes back in July. Yeah, and we'll take a look at that before it comes back in July.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. The next one is under student records. There it is. Do you have any questions about that?
We've recently been making some adjustments to that policy as well, so that should be compared if it didn't come right out of policy.
Correct. And the last one is under the six-day cycle. It just notes the schedule. We have day one through six for our calendar, school calendar.
Any other questions for now?
No.
Thank you.
We just had two changes, basically. On Wednesday, we don't have enrollment, so we took that schedule out, and we don't have study tables that night. That should have been right there after 3:25, 4:00 p.m. I have since recent the highlighted part, but there was a Wednesday schedule getting out at 2:25. And then towards the open enrollment day, down on page 24, so 2018, obviously, it's March 1st, 2019, and that was it. It should already be changed. Oh, 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 sorry. Right there. Switch it to 2019 instead of 2018.
Do you guys have Infinite Campus? But is there anything in there about that? Because they had like in the high school one, they had that.
I think it had something to it.
How to get on it?
Oh, yes. It had campus and student information website for parents. Yeah, it's on page eight, I believe.
I don't get any page numbers on that.
Right there.
They are at the top of the page. It says like, you know, the 23. Infinite Campus.
Okay. And then there was something else.
Should, can I ask a question, B?
Pardon me?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Should there be anything in your handbook specifically, but maybe all of the handbooks in general, about expectations of academic performance? The closest I have come is in Eric's. You have something that sort of gets close to that in the handbook that talks about expectation of how a student should do and what the consequences are if they don't. Whether that be can't play in athletics or all the way through, you have to take the year over again. There's none of that that's, in any of the handbooks, I don't see any of that. And I don't know where else you would put something like that. But it certainly seems, in particular at your school, that there's some need.
Do I think that there should be? I mean, are you talking about a punitive punishment for the kid or...
Talking about not just punitive punishment, but not excluding punitive punishment. But that we lay out clearly what an expectation for a student is and the range of things that can happen when a student doesn't meet those expectations. I'm not sure that, I don't know where we are clear about that. I know we're not clear about it in this document.
Is there the same policy at the middle school level as there is at the high school? Like, for example, to participate? I remember reading it, I've read so many of these handbooks, and I read in here that, you know, it's a privilege to participate in athletics or extracurricular. Is the same, do the same rules apply? And is that, or does that go into the handbook, or does that part of the policy that...
With a good conduct policy in there. Basically, that refers to alcohol, drugs, tobacco. Do not have the, you're thinking of no pass, no play?
Yeah.
In my, since I've been here, we haven't been very thoughtful on that. But I will be honest with you, at our age level, if we were to do that, our participations would, it wouldn't be good numbers-wise.
Say that again, Pat, I couldn't hear.
Our numbers would not be good participation-wise for, I mean, a variety of different reasons. You know, middle school, you know, they, high school, there's punishments if they don't pass class, they have to retake the class. Where middle school, it's, we want every kid to be successful, don't get me wrong. And we want to provide them with the opportunities that they wouldn't normally have anywhere else they don't have, that they don't have at Linn Hand. And I think if that's something that, if that's a route we want to go down, then I think we need to have some...
I don't know that, I don't know, Pat, if it's a route we want to go down. What I do know is that academic performance isn't where either one of us want it to be. And the things that we're doing to try and improve it are not working. And so we need to think about doing things differently. And when I say not working, I'm not working, I'm not talking about not working at the individual kid level, but at the overall metrics of performance level, they're not working the way that we want them to. And so we need to think about doing things differently. And so we ought to have tough conversations that are uncomfortable about these kinds of things. And if we all jointly decide it's the right thing to do, then we ought to do it. But not having the conversation should probably not be an option, because we've always done it this way. For the last few years, we should do it that way next year, too.
We have a board work session coming up. It might be a good idea for that to be part of that discussion, as long as we'll be setting goals as well. And as long as student achievement was our first goal as a board, and student achievement was Dr. Schutte's first goal as superintendent. I think having that discussion is a perfectly good thing. I will make sure it gets on the list to be discussed.
Thanks. So maybe input for that too later. I did notice on page 20 that we still have, under family education rights and privacy, we still have Matt Tullis down as the equity coordinator. So that probably just needs to get corrected. And then grade reporting is every nine weeks, or is it more frequently than that?
It's more frequently than that.
Because it says nine weeks in here, but I sort of remember that it was...
Yeah, we try to do it every three weeks where the teachers will update the grades. That way, parents and students and staff.
So in here, it says nine. Okay.
So are you suggesting that's something to be changed?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying I noticed...
That's when we send them out, is every night. They're updated every three weeks.
Okay, well.
Any other questions? Thank you, Pat.
Hello.
Just have a couple of changes, a couple of things that reflect a couple of pieces of different philosophy, and wanted to address one thing that was kind of particularly troublesome in terms of student behavior last year. On page 10, we've long had a STEM statement in our handbook, and I did add a statement about that one of the expectations we're going to have is that all students pursue a work-based or community-based learning opportunity while they're at MLA. We got started on that this spring with our STEM grant, and that work is going well. And we are now maintaining a listing of those opportunities and assisting students with those placements. So we even have a couple going on this summer, which is, which is a good thing. Wanted to point out on page 21, I included under this section of smoking and tobacco, a line about vapes. Vapes in all sizes, shapes, and forms seem to be a, not a new problem, but this year the proliferation of those was amazing, and not in a good way. But, so I have added a statement in the handbook to talk about vapes. We now get vapes that look like the old thumb drives, you know, that they're disguised as thumb drives and stuff, so had to deal with those, too.
Exploding batteries in pockets?
Didn't have an exploding battery this year, thankfully. I also included a statement on page 23 to reflect some work and training that staff has been having. Consequences for violating school rules. There's a, there's a lot of flexibility there, but we're adding the term collaborative problem solving, which is a protocol that we try to engage a student in in an attempt to solve a problem before it becomes a serious problem. And I wanted to recognize that in our handbook, is that something that we're going to make an effort and a push on next year as a staff. Otherwise, any other changes were based on personnel changes, removing the early Wednesday dismissal schedule, just procedural kinds of things.
Questions?
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
And for the 224-page document.
Yes. We just basically have updated it to make sure everything is current with what's going on and the policies and staffing that have gone on. So on page two, it's basically, we, Jackie updated her letter on page two. And on page three, we updated the mission statement and the vision statement. And then if you look at page four, the table of contents, those are all going to be updated once it's approved, and we're going to link each of those pages there. So if a parent wants to go to it, they just click on it, and then at the top of every page is back to the table of contents. So that will be updated before it goes on this website. Then the next one is on page nine, which has to do with the schedule. So we've just taken the Wednesday out and put in the regular schedule that we'll have. And then on page 13, it's just updating people. On page 14, the class attendance, we just updated that according to the attendance policy. And then you'll notice that on there, there's the blue link, so those will all be linked right to those documents.
And you did give the information that Karina is changed. Thank you.
Name was misspelled originally, and Jackie changed.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The next change that we had was on page 20. We took out that students will be charged for an additional ID if they lose it. So that's been taken out. And then on page 21, that's just updated to match the, the new responsible use procedures. And then on page 23, the only area that we really updated was the study hall, just because we needed to make that more centered around academic needs of students.
So your, go back one about your ID?
Yes.
If they lose an ID, then it's, there's no fee?
We were advised that we shouldn't be charging students for those since we require them.
Is it even a big deal? Go through many lost IDs where we're paying for them, or they were paying for them?
We didn't have near as many as when they wore them. But now we just say they need to have them on, on their person if they want to check out of study hall or check into the library. There's certain things, and they're supposed to use them at lunch. But we haven't had near as many come ask for a new one as when we required them to And then on page 24, we just added that the student waiver fee for the fees has to be completed before October 1st. So a lot of these, we're just updating and adding more detail. On 26, starting this fall, our freshmen will be required to have world history. And so as they move up, the American history one will start going away. And that has to do with the standards for the social studies classes. And on page 27, we basically just updated to make sure that we had things specific for the high school, so it was less cumbersome for parents to try and read through it. And then under eighth hour, we made a couple changes to align with the current curriculum in different areas. On the next page, we just added more information for the English language learners. We took out for extended day, the Tuesday through, Tuesday and through Thursday. We removed, or the Wednesday, we removed all that since it's going to be the same Monday through Thursday now. And we just added the word "and" under PBIS so that we had the name correct, correctly in there. And that's really what we changed on the next page, just making sure that we stayed consistent throughout. Counseling services, we updated to include our other provider of Ardent. And we also included that statement about if a student is at risk to themselves or to others, that we will do everything we can to contact family, but if not, then we will have to make a decision on what we need to do for that child to keep them safe. Under health services, we took, we changed to administrators because some of us have different roles, and so that way it covers us all. And as Stacy and I were sitting there talking today, we would like to add in an allergy awareness comment, the meningitis requirement into our handbook, as well as the ninth-grade dental screening, which those aren't in there right now, but that's what we would like to do. And with your permission, we'll add those before the next meeting. And on page 30, Stacy and I worked together and changed the title of one of the cards that they have to have filled out so that it was what's actually on there. And then on page 31, it's just updating how we're doing things as far as, you know, grades and grade level and our administrators. And then we included more detail on the 504 and special education. Then on page 36, we just updated about detentions. The previous had sus- The previous had suspensions, night suspension in school, and we cleaned that up, because there's too many things. It's just a detention after school, instead of giving it all these other names. And then on the next page, under the emergency procedures, we had the change in our sounds, so we needed to update that, so that we didn't have kids going outside for a tornado. And then on page 40, we needed to include that the students cannot bring in fast food into the lunchroom because of the federal program, and got rid of night suspension and changed the word to detention. So it's just clarity and more grammatically correct. On page 41, we will not be issuing parking tickets, but we did include there that students that are constantly violating where they're supposed to be parking are at risk for having their vehicles towed, and it would be at their expense. And on 42?
So wait a second. So that's pretty big.
Yeah.
So a kid parks illegally twice, and he gets towed away, and the parents are going to come and say, where does it say that twice gets me? Now who's going to pay for the towing fee? And by the way, they damaged my car. I think this is way too big. It opens us up for questions and liabilities. If it's important enough to tow them away, why aren't we charging them for illegal parking?
That was another area that, because of the school finance, the way things are written, that is one area that we cannot charge, because it's not, I'm trying to word it right. It's the money that was collected for those were not impacting a student.
We can charge fines, we can charge them for a parking fine, but we can't charge them a parking fee to just have access to a better area of the lot or a better parking spot than somebody else, but we can charge fines.
Oh, we, okay. So we would need to go back to the way, the previous version?
Yes.
Okay.
Fines are legal.
Okay. So we can't do a lottery yet?
Right.
Okay, so we'll get that back to the way it was.
If you do, just don't let anybody know.
Well, Paula, isn't it correct that you can actually charge a replacement fee for, like, lost ID, but it has to be the cost to replace it?
Right.
A lot of times, schools would use that as kind of a moneymaker, and you'd lose a 25-cent card and get charged $5 to replace it. You can't do that.
So should that stay the same or change back to the old policy of just charging for the cost of a new ID?
No.
Does it really cost a quarter?
No, it's a little, it's more than that by the time, because of the ink and everything.
Yeah.
Well, you can talk.
I know it's less than the $5. I think we figured it out, it was like between $2 and $3.
So that would be a high charge.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth the effort or not, but depends on how many you have, and if it helps keep it down.
And what we'll do is we'll run that again, that cost. And then on the next page, which is all under the smoking, related to the policy, the student violations, are subject to disciplinary actions and police citations, as well as if they continually violate, it would be additional disciplinary actions as well. And then on 43, just making sure that we have the current dates under there. We actually are getting ahead of ourselves on that copy, so we just need to make sure that we have the appropriate dates for the 1920 year. And then Mike, you had said something about the activities, and we do have in there the eligibility for non-athletics and athletics and the student code of conduct. Then on page 47, they reworded the fees for having uniforms cleaned or purchased based on their participation in the different musical groups. Then on page 49, under cheerleading, we took out the number of cheerleaders per sport, because we felt that was very limiting. If we had a lot more kids that need to be out there, we need to showcase our kids. We don't want to shut doors and opportunities. And on page 26, the same thing with the laundry or the towel fee. That was updated, as well as the lettering and participation awards. And then the final that we made was on page 58, the third item down, we took out the exclusion of, where it says, students with license.
Questions for Deb?
Nice job. It's very thorough, and I like how you can click on the policies, and it really seems like you've been working at it, yeah.
I'll get those updated before your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll try to have the transportation handbook get the July meeting with Rex having been on the job for a very short period of time. We thought we'd let him wait a little bit on that.
What about Lenahan?
I know that Kyle, did we put the Lenahan one on there?
Yeah.
There was very little to any, I don't think there were any changes of substance, but we'll have Kyle come to the next meeting as well. He just said there were some annual adjustments that needed to be made, names and stuff like that.
Can you talk?
We'll go for it.
Maybe I should say, can you breathe?
Well, thank you for giving me some time tonight. I'm here to talk about our continued development of our literacy curriculum for the special education program. If you guys remember back a year ago, I came to you talking about two different curriculums. System 44 was at that time the purchase that we were doing for Miller Middle School to support their workaround, helping kids who struggle learning to read. And then we used Really Great Reading in our K6 conversation, but at that time, due to budgetary constraints, we only implemented Really Great Reading partially through the K4 system. So I'm here tonight just to share with you guys a little bit of information about what it would cost to train the rest of the teachers through our K4 buildings, as well as bring it into Lenahan for the coming year. A little bit of review, so how we got to making these decisions. We began by developing a committee that represented the special ed teachers, the instructional coaches, and the AA from across the district. And we did an evaluation of what literature says are the right practices to do for struggling In doing that, once we understood what were those common themes of places who do a really great job in narrowing that gap between having a disability reading and not having a disability, we went back to our buildings, we looked at the practices we already had, what things are working, what things are working well, and then where did we need to make changes in our instructional practices and our instructional materials to fill that gap we have on doing best practice for our kids. Once we found out that the areas we really need to focus on are those really early pre-literacy skills, we had to talk to vendors and find out what kinds of materials, what kind of training is out there to help our teachers develop the skill set they don't currently have. And so we looked at a number of vendors who came in and represented what the training and the materials would look like to really focus on that phonemics part of our child development. We picked phonemics part, because as we did all of our study on what special education students tend to struggle with, we found out that most kids develop the ability to understand the basic aspects of language and sound and how they go together in kindergarten and first grade. With our special education students, many of them are in fifth and sixth grade, and they are still struggling developing those early sound sets. So we needed to find a way to teach them differently how to develop that. In going through, looking at vendors and talking to them about what materials do they have, what's the research behind their materials, what other districts use it, and how well does that work, the committee landed on a recommendation of Really Great Reading. So last year, you guys approved Really Great Reading, and we used it in 50% of our special education classrooms across our elementaries. By the time we purchased it, could bring the training to the district and start implementing, we had missed two of our assessment windows that we do for all kids on the FAST literacy assessment. So we only have one window of assessment data, but when we meet with you guys next year, I'll have more assessment windows, so I can talk about how well it has worked. In visiting with the teachers who have been implementing, they have very positive, strong things to say about our kids. They're really enjoying the practice, they're seeing a difference on their skill development per the monitoring we do within the IEPs every week. And so to bring the rest of our special education teachers at our elementaries, as well as our Lenahan special education teachers, the materials they need and the training that we need, there would be two purchase agreements that next time you guys would have to agree upon. The first one would be for $20,070.40, and that would be to train the rest of our teachers through our elementaries, as well as replace what's called consumables. Those are the workbooks the kids work in, and we have them transitioned and go with them from year to year. The other item would be then for the Lenahan group, $20,364.20. That would provide them the training on how to do the materials and use them correctly, as well as purchase the booklets and the manipulatives that go with it, because it's a very hands-on program. It has a lot of technology-based elements, as well as the good old-fashioned manipulation on boards and moving letters around, hand movements, and a lot of fun with all demonic devices with it, so. So that's what we would be looking to do, to make sure that now all of our kids through eighth grade have the most current research-based instructional materials for special education What questions do you guys have?
You have a recommendation for K4 and Lenahan?
Yes.
Two separate?
This was just informational, since?
Right.
Yeah.
And they're both at about $20,000.
Correct. So we're looking at a total of around $40,000 to bring all of our elementaries up to, elementaries in immediate building up to where we want them to be.
So your process of finding this, that right there is, very appreciative, helping understand how you went about it, all the people that were involved. My question is, is this the long-term solution, or is this, we're going to try this for a year and see if it works, and if not, we're going to go through this again and try to find something else? Or is this, all the effort that you guys put into this, is this a two, three, four, five-year strategy?
This is a five-year strategy. You know, this is a commitment, because we have to ensure that we train the teachers, we give them the opportunity to get used to materials, and we implement it over time.
Okay.
With kids who have learning disabilities in the area of reading, their pacing of developing skills is much slower than most kids. So we have to give them more years of experience to do that.
And then the consumables, the reoccurring cost every year?
Yeah.
Approximately $10,000?
If we would do both buildings, we'd be looking between $10,000 and $15,000.
Okay. Thanks.
So will you have numbers to go along with the success of the program later? I mean, I said, you said that about the FAST data. So do you expect improvements, or what do you?
Absolutely.
You have, I mean, so it's like, I've got the feeling it was a feeling that it's doing well, but do you actually know?
So I know that it's going well, because part of the process I have to do every year in figuring out how many teachers we need in our building is I have to read every IEP. And in reading every IEP, I also have to look at all their graphs and all their progress monitoring, student by student. And I know which teachers were trained in this and have been using in their classroom. And so I can look on their individual data sets, on their graphs, and see where it says, we call it a phase line, and on the phase line it says, began implementing Really Great Reading. And I can see which kids have responded to it and which kids haven't. And the vast majority of our kids are responding to it, meaning they're growing at a rate greater than the teacher and the IEP team said they expected them to. But to show big-picture data instead of student by student, FAST is the best way to do that, and I won't have those data indicators until at least midpoint next year.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
So this is that time of year where we start to take a look at our priorities as it relates to the IASB legislative resolutions. We have provided you with the resolutions that we developed last year. There were six, all of which I believe are still relevant, because there really wasn't much of any action on any of these, most notably SAVE, or possibly the underfunded or unfunded mandates piece there too. But I've provided you with the updated document from IASB as well, just to look at between now and our next meeting in July. And if you see something on that list, and I particularly refer you to the latter part of the document, it's a relatively long document, but the latter part has the numbered IASB number items, and we'll take a look in July at seeing if you want to change any of those or if you're comfortable with the same priorities. And again, what happens then, all districts submit their priorities, and then Beas are representative at the delegate assembly, then they vote on this, don't they?
Yes, unless someone would like to attend the delegate assembly in my place, I would be more than happy to allow you to do that.
One thing I noticed in this big IASB document, it said that IASB thinks that school board members should be elected to three-year terms.
Right.
That's the first I've ever seen that. Maybe they've?
IASB has held that for a long time.
They've beaten that drum for a long time.
It used to be three, and then they changed it to four.
Back to three in here. Actually, it was three, and the state made it four.
Right, right, right. They made it, you know, it used to be elections took place every year, and they were three-year terms, then they went to every other year to save money in four-year terms.
And it is page 11 that the numbered piece begins in the IASB document?
I believe, Mike, their position on that is mainly due to the potential for significant turnover every election. You know, there's at least three or four every election, and with the four-year terms, they're finding, I believe, more people are either not fulfilling their terms or they're not continuing on for a second term. And if you have significant change, then, you know, it slows down, I suppose, the ongoing efforts. efforts.
Here, for the next one.
This is an action item. We've put comparable dates from this year on the schedule of board meetings for next And we'd like the board to take action on that, of course. Throughout the years we've had in the past, if a date winds up being a particular concern, we can survey the group to see if a date change is warranted.
Questions? May I have a motion to approve the regular school board meeting dates for the 2018-19 school year?
So moved. Second.
Harris Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
So, at our last meeting, we held a public hearing in order to hear any comments regarding transferring $50,000 to our flexibility account for the IJAG program. And we actually need to do a resolution that we have to send to the Department of Ed, so we need a motion to approve that resolution. And during the public hearing, there were no comments written or verbal, so.
I have a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Carter Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Deb, you want to speak to activity passes?
We're moving you ahead.
We would like to make a recommendation that the student activity tickets be increased by $5. And part of that reason is because at the CIML Athletic Directors Meeting, they are trying to get more consistency, so that when families travel from one school to another, that it's not, they're not surprised by the fluctuating prices. So, it would just be a $5 fee on top for the activity ticket, which would also make, excuse me, would also make their, a set fee for the varsity football games would be $6 across the board, and then other varsity events would be $5. And below varsity would be $4 for everyone. We do, I believe we will still continue with the elementary passes for elementary students, so that they have the opportunity to come, as long as they are accompanied by an adult, and leaving our senior passes at 50, like they currently are, and then other regular adult activity passes at 90. So, those wouldn't increase, it would just be the $5 on top of the student one. And this, the only impact would be for our reduced students, because they pay half of the cost. So, now they, instead of paying the, was it $22.50, or it's now going to be $25 each. So, that was our recommendation that we wanted to bring to you.
Questions for Deb? May I have a motion to approve the increase of activity tickets as presented?
So moved.
Carter Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
All righty. Good evening.
Aye.
Tonight, I'm here to discuss the continuation of the May 21st board meeting for our new telephone system. At the last board meeting, I was granted approval to move ahead with the discovery portion of the process with Heartland Business System, where we would go through and evaluate some of the loose ends, as far as phone number counts, to try and fine-tune some of those numbers. And we're at a point where there should be a couple of proposals in front of you, one for a one-year, a three-year, and a five-year option for the phone system. And those are for, the one, three, and five-year are split up by licensing costs. Now, this is a Cisco phone system, and there are annual license fees associated with that. So, the one, three, and five-year costs include the Cisco licensing annually, as well as the Informicast single ware solution for the emergency management portion. And just to recap on that, that is the piece of software that allows for E911 and other emergency notifications to be broadcast through multiple pieces of hardware on one alert. So, there are some cost savings. Obviously, if we go with a further contract rather than one year, the three-year option saves approximately $8,000. A five-year would save about $22,000. And as we are looking at this phone solution as a long-term piece of hardware to hopefully support us several years, the Technology Department is recommending going with the five-year solution for a total amount of $262,340.60.
Questions for Josh?
So, the initial proposal we talked about before was the $193,000?
Yes, and that was for licensing for one year.
For one year.
Yeah. And there was some cost reductions that we found in utilizing different types of handsets, different hardware server models and that type of thing, so we were able to bring it down a little bit to $184.
So, the $193, or the $184 is?
For one year. But so the--
Includes hardware and the licensing and everything?
It includes all the telephones, the hardware, the licensing at $184, the server software, the consulting fees that are required, the total cost of the proposal.
So, the $262 is the same, all the stuff that was in the $193, plus five years of licensing?
Plus the additional four years of licensing.
Other questions?
There is one part after this, for the SIP provider, the session initiation protocol provider, which basically provides the service for the phone systems. So, that would be, we would be discussing that next, pending the approval of this.
Is this licensing just evergreen software on the system in five years, or does it include extended hardware warranty as well?
The Cisco portion is for their smart net licensing, so it does provide us all the updates and--
Five years?
Correct. Yes.
Guarantee against equipment obsolescence. Cisco does a great job of like, end the life of their stuff real quick.
It does not guarantee end-of-life obsolescence. So, yes, there could be an update down the line in seven, 10 years somewhere, where the software that we're running on the PBX system no longer supports the hardware.
And how long have we had the system we have now?
We have had the, well, depending on how far back we can go in our paperwork, I'm estimating 13 years. I'm guessing, yeah, it could probably be a little bit higher, but depending on what part you're looking at at the time, it's been put together for many, many years and maintained. So, and we are getting to a point where, I believe I've said it before, but it's definitely getting hard to find those parts to keep it running.
Well, even though it's a high-cost item, the pricing that you have acquired is significantly better than what was being looked at before you came on.
Correct. Yeah, there are some steep discounts that we were able to find going with the Cisco. And this was the lowest-cost solution that was presented with our RFP process. Another area, we are paying approximately $43,000 a year for our current Sentrex and other telephone line systems, for elevators, emergency management, things like that. I'm hoping that moving over to an IP-based SIP solution will be able to save some money there.
So, remind me, does this come out of like Pebble or?
Sales tax.
Sales tax.
Keep shopping, Marshall Tom. May I have a motion to approve the updated proposal from Heartland Business Systems for a five-year license and hardware at a cost of $262,340.60?
So moved.
Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
All right. The second portion of this phone system upgrade is for SIP service. That's the session initiation protocol, and that's basically how we're establishing our phone calls. You can think of it as our phone service for the system. It's required for inbound and outbound calls. We published an RFP on the 21st, and so here are the two options that we received back. When we did propose, or when we did publish the RFP, we used 50 DID lines, and DID stands for direct inward dial. So, that's the number of concurrent connections that we can have in our system before we get a busy signal. Right now, we have 99 DID lines through our Sentrex, and the Technology Department believes we do not even come close to that. Working with Heartland Business Systems and CenturyLink, our current telephone provider, we believe 50 is a good number, but through some further analysis, that may go up or down a couple of lines here or there. So, the two companies that we had submit bids were IT Savvy and CenturyLink. The cost of CenturyLink was much, much less. It's also our current provider. There'll be some added benefits if we do choose CenturyLink as our SIP provider. Hopefully, they'll be able to port any sort of numbers over, so we won't have to re-telephone number the entire district.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, we're definitely shooting for that. So, the recommendation would be to award CenturyLink the bid for SIP trunking services for 36 months at the approximate cost of $662.50 a month. And that may change. We're hoping to get a contract here within the next couple of weeks that we can give to the board for signature. The reason why I'm coming right now is our next meeting is not until July 18th, and we're trying to keep the ball rolling to meet that goal of having the phone system in by the beginning of the school year.
So, the Heartland Business Systems, CenturyLink, they've worked together many times?
They have, yes. And we actually consulted with both Heartland and CenturyLink, and they recommended as well going through CenturyLink rather than IT Savvy.
For triple the cost.
So, and I, again, I do think that will be some cost savings from our current Sentrex system, as well as our long distance. Currently, the district is paying $0.03 a minute for long distance, and we average about 3,000 minutes a month. This plan would include 7,000 free long-distance minutes, so hopefully we can cut that bill down as well.
Any other questions for Josh? Could I have a motion to approve the recommendation to award CenturyLink the bid for SIP trunking services for 36 months in the approximate amount of $662 per month?
So moved. Second.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
You now have before you the proposal for the superintendent's contract. Are there any questions? I have a motion to approve a 1.77% total package increase for the superintendent.
So moved.
Carter Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to expedite the first part of board policies here. One through six, which are coming back as a first reading after having been reviewed at the last meeting, have not been adjusted from the last time you saw those. So, the 312.3E1, fringe benefits for administrator supervisors, 506.2E1, authorization for releasing student directory information, 705.1, purchasing bidding. You'll remember, we combined a couple policies together for that, deleted the old. 705.1R, that was what we deleted, and 7.51R1 is the new regulation that's replacing the R. And then, 8.01.1 on school facilities, long-range planning was a new policy that IASB had that we did not have. So, I would recommend those to be approved and waived the second reading.
Okay, we need to break those apart now that you just put them all together. 705.1, 506.2E1, 705.1R1, 801.1 are all new policies. So, I need a motion to adopt and waive the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Heitman Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. Now, we need 312.3E1, 705.1R, and 801.2 to be amended and waived the second reading.
We haven't done 801.2 yet.
Well, it's in that first. Yeah, let's put it there. So, we have, let me repeat those again. The 312.3, which is the fringe benefits page, we have 705.1, which is purchasing policy, the regulation going with that, 801.2, which is school facility surveys. And I need a motion to amend those three policies and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Okay.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. So, now we should be ready for Ross's, right? Yep. Okey-dokey.
Yeah, and I think, I think what happened on 801.2, for some reason, in our documentation, we didn't, I think Ben recommended that be marked as reviewed, and for some reason, in our documentation following the meeting, we didn't. So, that's why that was on there.
So, you can just pull that-- So you can just pull it out. You can already mark it as reviewed?
No.
Okay.
Is that 801.2?
801.2. It was marked reviewed at the last meeting. It was not, we didn't. From the agenda. Okay, Ross, let's see if you can go just as fast.
I think I can.
Okay, wow.
So 801.7 does not exist for the IASB, but I would propose that we just accept this as is. I've gone over these with Dr. Shute and Chuck, and so that one, keep as is.
So you'd like to remark that is reviewed?
Correct.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the rest of them are going to have to be modified to meet the IASB website. So 802.1, 802.2, we have to get a consensus on a dollar figure, which we're going to need that from Dr. Shute and Paulette. That is regards to improvements and what can be done by the superduper, the delegation of authority, what they're allowed to do without it having to come in front of the board.
Yeah, and we adjusted the threshold to 25,000 to be consistent with other thresholds that we had for purchasing.
We didn't have a threshold before.
It was low, lower.
It was lower. Nothing in the policy at all, the old policy. It had to have been referenced somewhere else.
Yeah.
All right.
802.3 as well is change, there's some changes to satisfy the new IASB, and that's where there was the 25,000 mentioned there. 802.4, it's the same thing, we needed the, we needed the policy, the thresholds on that one.
You go back to 802.3 on emergency repairs, essentially what we added is the caveat, which is in IASB, that occasionally you can run into some emergency repairs that you just simply don't have time to go out to a formal bidding process even though the dollar amount exceeds the threshold where you normally would. And so what winds up happening, an example in a former district, we had a sewer issue contingent with our high school cafeteria about a month before school opened. So you just simply go to the AA and seek their permission and going ahead and getting quotes, and then moving forward in the project in order to get it rectified before school starts, the situation.
That sounds like an important one.
That was, yeah. An expensive one, too.
So 802.4 is the next.
Right. Capitalized.
We had some thresholds we wanted to ensure were still valid. And there's a minor change from the IASB. Okay. 802.7, this one's good except there's just one sentence we need to add to the end of it to satisfy the IASB and the regulation.
I think we?
Marked as reviewed.
Yep, marked as good.
So we need 603.7 through 802.7 to come back.
Correct.
And 401.8 and 802.7R are marked as reviewed.
801.7, did you get that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to cover the last few, or do you want to act on those?
What last few?
401.8.
Okay.
401.8, we made a slight adjustment recognizing that we do on occasion have employees that provide us 48 years or more of service. So we added a 40-year recognition to that, whereas before 35 years was the highest threshold and a dollar amount not to be exceeded for that gift. And then we got two policies, a policy and an exhibit here. We developed a policy using some IASB as well as Bendor's policy on volunteer, volunteers, and Gabby, my administrative assistant, is going to be the volunteer coordinator next year, so she worked with me to develop that. And then we also worked with HR to use their school volunteer application form as the, I think it was HR department, as an exhibit there to go with.
Any questions on those? Those will need to come back as well.
Yep.
Okay. Anything of note, Mr. Potter?
We'll be working on promoting online registration.
Coming soon to a school district near you?
Yeah, so July 9th is going to open through the campus, and we'll have July 10th on the button for updates, and we'll be here on site, online on-site. So we'll, we're going to have some big deals.
That's great.
How many computers will be on site?
I can't say all the logistics and everything, but?
A hundred.
A hundred Chromebooks have been on site.
Oh.
Try and do work ahead of time so the computer will report a counting, or becoming familiar, so when it comes up they just go to that, but we realize.
Reminders, our next regular board meeting is July 16th, and Sean is up for policies? He's excited, see that big smile on his face?
I got a whole month to get ready, that's what I'm excited about.
But will you do it before the day before the board meeting?
Of course!
Okay, all right. Looking at committee reports, we've had a finance committee meeting, but you will be hearing information about that in the exempt session. Do you want to talk about the Acer meeting?
Sure. So we had an Acer meeting that was somewhat sparsely attended today. Probably the thing, most notable thing was representative of the city had mentioned that the neighbor to the Anson Park has filed an injunction on the land swap deal to get a ruling on the fence and the property lines there. So there's a hearing, I believe tentatively scheduled for July 7th on that. Outside of that?
Dr. Shute had a short report. It was applauded at the end of his.
Maybe. Amy Piper was very enthusiastic about the STEM camps and partnering, you know, with Bobcat University, and their numbers have increased by over 100, I think, from a year ago in terms of participation in that, so that was encouraging. So those are getting off the ground now. I'm trying to think if there's anything else of note.
The water department is working with the STEM camps, so the city water wagon is showing up with all of the elementaries promoting groundwater, of course.
There'll be a solar car tomorrow at Rogers. Do you want to come by?
Do you use your mic?
Oh, there'll be a solar car tomorrow at Rogers, so. Want to stop by? No, in the afternoon.
That's Iowa State?
Mm-hmm.
We do need to set up a board work session for the month of July, so get out your calendars. At that session, we will go over the board self-assessment, and we will set board goals and superintendent goals. Suggestion of the time, other than July 4th.
Can we keep it in that week?
Of July 4th?
No.
It works there. I'll be out that whole week.
Could be traveling a lot in July, so.
What about?
I was all over.
Thanks, man.
Those guys didn't want to go.
Monday, July 9th?
I am gone.
Can you cancel?
At a price.
So are you gone that week of July 9th, or are there any other days?
I'm back Friday 13th. Might not be a good day to do it, Friday 13th.
So we're looking at the second half of the month, then?
The week of the 23rd is very good for me, anytime.
Can, can we have abbreviated board meeting on the 16th and do it after the board meeting?
For our July 18th board meeting on the 16th? Is that?
July 16th.
The July 16th board meeting on the 16th, you mean?
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. It won't be an abbreviated meeting when we only have one meeting a month.
On July?
We could probably start earlier.
What about the 17th?
17. Going once.
Works for me.
Twice.
Yeah, it's good.
17.
Same time, or?
Same time, conference room.
What's in July? Same time, five.
17.
Somebody sent a Microsoft Outlook thing out?
Yeah, pardon me?
Somebody sent a Microsoft Outlook thing out?
Yeah. Tuesday, July 17th. What time would you like to start?
Five.
Five to seven?
Sure.
What have we done to improve the educational experiences for students?
Clarity on the handbooks. Helps everybody understand expectations.
Hopefully gave a green light to that for a new reading program or expansion of this new reading program.
Great reading.
It was nice to hear the services of the nurses.
We don't very often hear from them and what's happening in their world, so it's nice to get that report once a year. Anything else? My quote today comes from Vince Lombardi, and he says, "Perfection is not attainable, but if we choose, if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence." I would suggest a quick break before exempt session.